I love to get along with all of this stuff. Good afternoon. The May fourth, two thousand and twenty-three regular board meeting of the City Colleges of Chicago is now called to order. Please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance through the flag. Thank you very much. Will the chief advisor please call the roll?
Chair Massey?
Present.
Vice Chair Swanson?
Here.
Secretary Davis?
Here.
Trustee Kent? Trustee Williams?
Here.
Trustee Goldblum?
Let the records show that in accordance with the Illinois Public Community College Act and the Illinois Open Meetings Act, we do have a court. So, good afternoon again, everyone, and welcome. Thank President Hollinsworth for hosting us at this wonderful facility on such a beautiful day. And I understand that any of you who walk the line have a driving truck, probably repair an engine, the facility is open. This month, we'll celebrate our graduating students who will walk across the stage at the Wintrust Arena this weekend, and I hope all of you will be there. We wish you all the best, our students, as you continue to advance your education, and certainly we congratulate you all. Speaking of students, I would like to welcome our new student trustee, Yuda Goldblum, who is a student at Wilbur Wright College. Having been elected by the student body of Wilbur Wright College on behalf of all students across the district, we are delighted to have you to join us for first a board meeting and to begin its official duties. In fact, to allow him to begin and give his presentation first, I would like to entertain a motion to consider Resolution one, part oh four, out of order for the purpose of formally appointing Yuda Goldblum as our student trustee. Will the chief advisor please present the resolution?
Yes. Resolution one point zero four. Whereas the Illinois Public Community College Act requires each community college board to have one non-voting student member, and that non-voting student member selected in multi-campus districts shall represent all campuses in this district, in those districts. The campus from which the member is selected shall be determined by lot each year, provided that no campus shall twice have selected a non-voting student member until all campuses in the district have have once been represented on the district board. And whereas in accordance with Article one, section one point two of the Board bylaws, one member shall be a student at one of the colleges who shall be selected in accordance with the state act and shall serve for a single term of one year beginning each April fifteenth. Now therefore be resolved that in accordance with the act and the Board bylaws, the student body of Wilbur Wright College at a recent election elected Yuda Goldblum as the student trust student board member to represent all campuses of the City Colleges of Chicago for the period from April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three through April twenty through April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Trustees, if there are no questions, may I have a motion to please resolution? Second?
Second.
If we don't need a roll call, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So let the record show that Resolution one point zero four has been included. In pursuant to state law, the term of service for student trustees is one year, starting and ending each April. As such, I will ask Chancellor Sagato and everyone here to join me and welcome in the student, new student trustee, Yuda Goldblum, as he prepares to serve on the City Colleges Board of Trustees and to give his first report. Mr. Goldblum, welcome. You actually don't have to give a report, but you can say whatever you'd like.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much, Chair Massey, and thank you to the members of the board. I would like also to thank the students who elected me. Can you hear me? No. Is this better?
Yeah.
All right, great. Well, I would like to also thank the students who elected me, and I'm excited and honored, humbled to represent not only the students from Wright College, but also all the students from the City Colleges of Chicago. I have prepared a report, and I would like to begin with some district initiatives related to the students, or sorry, I corrected to initiative. In recognition of Advocacy Week of two thousand and twenty-three, students across the colleges worked on writing letters to their legislators in support of the Mental Health Early Action on Campus Act to support timely funding for the act. That concludes the DSGA report, and I'll move on to the individual colleges. From Daily College, they would like to open with a quote. "I opened myself to the gentle indifference of the world." That's from Albert Camus, the French author known for his fiction and philosophical works. Some events that they worked on in the past month was National Pretzel Day, where students were able to indulge in salty and sweet options. They would also like to recognize the first official club to start up since the pandemic, which is their engineering club, so congratulations to them. Their student government hosted a study with SGA event for their finals and also provided an opportunity for students to meet with their mascot Richie promoting the sneaker ball, which is coming up. Olive Harvey, I will now give the report from Olive Harvey. The president of SGA for Olive Harvey recently received a full-ride athletic scholarship to D One Alcorn State University, where he will continue his studies in exercise science. And so I'd like to congratulate him for all his work and service, as well as this amazing award. Their Black History Month Planning Committee, led by Student Activities and sponsored by SGA, facilitated the first annual Black Excellence Expo, and it featured entrepreneurs, a panel of entrepreneurs, as well as several black businesses as vendors. The event yielded two hundred and twenty-six participants. Moving on from that, the Panther Reds cheer and dance team captain and SGA Senator Peyton Williams was nominated for the All-In-Voting Honor Role, highlighting her outstanding contributions to helping the Olive Harvey College and surrounding community with voter's registration. So congratulations there. And the Student Activities partnered also with Chicago Votes in March for Hoop to the Polls, an event designed to have students and staff participate in a basketball tournament and vote on-site. They had one hundred and eighteen participants there, and SGA also helped bring the total number of active clubs back up to ten, with several more to start during the upcoming fall, the two thousand and twenty-three term. So those were some highlights from this year, and I would like to congratulate those students on their work and encourage them in their ongoing efforts. A report from Kennedy King. They are partnering with their president to create more green spaces on campus. In terms of advocacy, they hosted their recent monthly student body meeting at the Dawson Technical Institute, giving the students their platform to share their thoughts and opinions. Some highlights, they supported the grad ceremonies and celebrated the achievements of their amazing students, and they're excited about the future and the initiatives that they're currently working on and will continue to work on. There is no report for Truman or Harold Washington, so I'll move to Wilbur Wright. The events, in terms of events, they have Grad Fest, which is the week from May first to May fourth. The SGA is hosting a kickball tournament to conclude the semester in place of their weekly student government meeting, and they're also hosting an end-of-the-year western dance. In terms of updates, they have been working on specialized advising, where they are trying to have an advising, a dedicated advisor to the business program there, and they were able to get a committee together with SGA advising and faculty, as well as representatives from the administration to plan for the Fall two thousand and twenty-three specialized advising pilot. Also, in terms of Advocacy Week, SGA drafted a letter that the colleges all signed, as I mentioned recently, and they had over eighty students sign the letter, and in support of that, they met with Representative Lindsay LaPointe, who is a representative from the Dunning area, to discuss their, to share their stories and discuss the Mental Health Early Action on Campus Act. The report from Malcolm X. Malcolm X is still working on the Wi-Fi on campus, and they have some events coming up for Grad Fest, such as SGA Breakfast with the faculty and staff. They have a lunch and karaoke, and an outdoor Grad Fest with skating and bowling, as well as a cap decoration. So that concludes the reports from the colleges, and I would like to thank everyone again for this amazing opportunity, and I can't wait to continue supporting students and sharing their stories.
Are there any questions from our student trustee? Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you over the next year. So now we will hear from Chancellor Sagato. I always hate to follow students when I was president.
Yeah.
Because they always gave such great reports.
It's great to hear what is going on, and thank you for having a report at your first meeting, is always the case, because you're just coming on. But as I already know by the fact that we've already had the opportunity to meet, you are really, didn't just take an interest in this position, you're prepared to follow through and represent the students in very good ways. So thank you, welcome, right? I did truly enjoy the conversation that we had, where I, you know, learned about your not-so-conventional pathway, you know, to Wilbur Wright College, the good work you're doing in engineering, you know, your post-secondary plans in the field, right? Our shared common interest in climate change and, you know, what we can do about it. So if you haven't had a chance, you know, to meet our new student trustee, please, you know, welcome him. Introduce yourselves. Here, I'm talking to the team, to the presidents, you know, he will make many, many contributions. So we're looking forward to working with you, Yuda, and welcome.
And now Bob does a report.
Well, I can't, because he's doing it from a student perspective, but I can. I do want to welcome Vigi Alexander, Professor Vili Alexander. I'm not sure, is Vigi here today? Oh, she's on the phone. Okay, so on the phone, Professor Alexander of Malcolm X College, who is the new Faculty Council President. We want to really welcome you and, you know, thank you as well. You know, the provost and I very much look forward to working with you throughout the year, hearing the faculty report meetings. And of course, we've been working with Professor Vigi Alexander, and she has been part of Faculty Council. She was a critical voice in the committee that we had during COVID, you know, where we were meeting regularly with faculty to make sure that we could, you know, communicate decisions and come to better decisions as a right result of those conversations. So we already have a great experience in working with Professor Alexander. You know, just one little note, I do remember very vividly that our decision to go to testing for all, when we did that in two thousand and twenty-one, was a direct result of a conversation with Professor Alexander. So looking forward to that. You know, also just lifting up today that we are in the midst of Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So we're celebrating the diverse and rich Asian American, Pacific Islander, you know, heritage and culture that exists all across, you know, our city and that exists also within our college. And so, you know, this is a month for us to reflect among our faculty, staff, students, and throughout the Chicago community. It's also Mental Health Awareness Month, and we are, you know, supporters of greater resources, you know, coming from the state, you know, to mental health for our students. The ideal, this is really a great month, too, to, you know, bring forth to the board our latest investment in mental health supports. I'm proud to say that the board will consider an agreement with a provider of psychiatry and telehealth services that can assist our students during the nights and weekends when our college wellness centers are not open. We recognize our students' mental health is a foundation to our success, and I want you to know that we have tripled our spend on mental health supports over my tenure to four point four million annually. And with today's decision, our students will have twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week access to mental health supports, both through their wellness centers and through a vendor minor doctors. So we're leading the way, and our students are leading the way, you know, with the advocacy that you described that is happening district-wide, to make sure that all of the decision-makers around us understand how valuable these investments in mental health services really are. And I want our students to know that they should feel proud to be of an institution that has been investing, will continue to invest, and will also work with you to push for investments. I came back from a two days in Springfield, where Vice Chancellor Jennifer Mason and I spoke to many, many legislators about our priorities, including, you know, our priorities in mental health. I do want to thank President Hollinsworth and her team for generously hosting us today. It's always great to be here at Olive Harvey College. It's, I think, particularly special because this board some time ago made a decision that it wanted to be out of colleges, and it was right around the time of the pandemic, and it was hard for us to actually execute on that fully, right? And here we are, and I think, you know, we are at, you know, the furthest point on the South Side, right, that you can be, right? Close to where I grew up, okay? And so testament to the board's commitment to say, we're going to our colleges. We're going to our colleges on the North Side at Truman. We're coming to our colleges on the far, far, far South Side of the city, and we'll continue to be visiting the colleges, and I want to thank the board for doing this. I do also want to just point out again that Olive Harvey is leading the pilot expansion of the services that we're offering through one million degrees, and that effort will continue to grow and provide coaches, mentors, stipends, professional development support as it grows, and that we have been able to reach the twenty million dollar goal plus goal that gives us the confidence that we'll be able to grow this now to Malcolm X Colleges, College next year and to subsequent colleges in the years to come. I just want to lift up, too, it's no small matter that this past month, the Chicago Roadmap and the City Colleges of Chicago Foundation, we hosted a visit by the U.S. Department of Education, who came with an entire delegation to see the work that we are doing in Chicago between City Colleges of Chicago and Chicago Public Schools. This is truly becoming a national model, one that we should all be very, very proud of, because this is our collective work as a whole. This is each of our seven colleges working with the district, working with Chicago Public Schools. So I want to thank everybody that's been involved in that effort. Just before heading to Springfield on Monday, I had a wonderful opportunity to be at the Chicago Cultural Center with President Sean Jackson and a hundred and fifty people that were gathered there to support students that were entering into, these are CPS students that are graduating from Chicago Public Schools, that are enrolling in Truman College's Teach Chicago Tomorrow program, including many of them who are taking advantage of the seed scholarship that we have provided to those students. So we are, this incoming class, it's seventy students, it's the biggest cohort today. That class joins sixty current students already studying at Truman to become future CPS educators. They leave CPS, they come to CCC, they never leave Chicago. Our four-year universities come to our campus, provide instruction on our campus, and when they're done, they go right into CPS classrooms, guaranteed to teach future generations of educators. And so this is growing, as the word gets out, it will grow even more, and Chicago will be the better of it. They were black and brown future educators. There were female and male future educators, Latino male, black male. It was a beautiful sight to see, and the big thing is, we know they're going to be supported. Why? Because they're at City Colleges of Chicago. That's why we know they're going to be supported and why they're going to end up in the classroom. I do want to point out, too, today, the board will be considering, and a very important investment in Westside Learning Center. You know, this is the modernization of Westside Learning Center. This is an investment that will bring a community center to Westside Learning Center, but also ensure that when you walk into Westside Learning Center, it looks and feels and is every bit of Malcolm X College that the main building is. And I want to thank President David Sanders, because from the moment I walked in, he walked me into Westside Learning, and he said, "Look at that, and look at this, and I want this to look like that," right? And here we are, right? And your efforts to go out and raise nine million dollars from our state legislature, both Senate and the House, is making the first part of this journey, the second part. We did some biology labs, but the second big part of this journey of possibility, and then City Colleges will be finishing it off in the future. So in fact, that vision that you've had truly becomes a reality. So we're looking very much forward to that. You know, speaking of Malcolm X, we hosted the Star Scholar Ceremony, the Cordon Ceremony there, and it was a packed house. We had to pull out the bleachers, right? These Star Scholars, we used to do that in the auditorium, right? And not even fill it. Now we're in the gymnasium, and we got to pull out the bleachers, right? So that's just a testament to, you know, what the Star Scholarship has meant to students and families, and something that this board has repeatedly continued to invest in, that I clearly support, every one of our seven presidents support. We have in Star Scholarship this year our largest freshman class ever, and the numbers trending towards next year indicate that we will likely have the largest class ever in the subsequent year as well. And so again, thank you to the team and all the colleges that work on that. Harold Washington College, by the way, you know, thank you again. You host our meetings all the time, including our last meeting where we had the mural unveiling. I understand that the mural is not yet up, right? Because we're doing some very high-level professional painting to make sure that the wall is properly set, but once the mural, the Harold Washington mural that was done by the college, you're working with the Legacy Committee, is up, we will let you all know so people can stop by and see it, okay? I just want to give a couple of others, since we're, you know, headed to commencement, and we're going to be celebrating our students, but I also want to celebrate others in and around the district. Kudos to Wright College Assistant Professor Mary Mayer, who brought the Diplomacy Lab to Wright and has been selected to participate in the two thousand and twenty-three Phobite Hayes Seminars Abroad Program in Mexico this summer. Also to Wright Colleges, Helene Jimenez, who was chosen as Campus Comptech Newman Civic Fellow, and to Cornelius Johnson, Associate Professor of Music, the Chair of Humanities Department at Olive Harvey College, and a tenor who just wrapped up the five-show run of Proximity at Lyric Opera of Chicago. And I heard him sing at a Urban League event, okay? When I was, you know, first year as Chancellor of City Colleges, shows my early opportunities to see our faculty member in front of, you know, fifteen hundred, two thousand people, just, you know, with an amazing display of his talents, right? So congratulations to him. I also, you know, want to make sure that, you know, I thank Provost Potter, President Sanders, and Janowski, because this week while I was out in Springfield, you all represented us at a forum on the digital university, right? And I was really pleased that, you know, City Colleges was there in force, speaking about the work that we're doing to be that digital university as well, highlighting our use of technology, our efforts to transition online during the pandemic, and to continue to serve our students with these incredible tools. And speaking of technology, you know, during the pandemic and to and through to this moment, our CIO Gerald Martin has done an incredible job, and I want to thank you. I know this is your last board meeting as you're, you know, moving on and transitioning, appreciate really all of your efforts and, you know, thank you. This was your second stint at City Colleges of Chicago, but a very important one, right? I think back to the pandemic and all the things that you and your team had to do to make sure that we kept moving forward, and you did, right? In very powerful ways, so thank you. We thank you to Director of Internal, yeah, yeah, thank you, Gerald.
Thank you to Director of Internal Audit Gina Hentil and her team for that thorough presentation we got during the committee meeting and about the audit work and the audit plan. We really appreciate, you know, the work that Audit does, because Audit makes us better, okay? And helps us to uncover places where we can improve. So you will hear today's meeting from Provost Potter about our key performance indicators we board. We have been listening to you about how we might simplify them, so Provost Potter will share with you a little bit more of that information. And finally, obviously, we are very excited about honoring our associate degree earners at our commencement ceremonies at Wintrust Arena this Saturday. As a reminder, we have two ceremonies. The first starts at ten a.m. for Truman, Daily, Olive Harvey, and Harold Washington Colleges. The second starts at three thirty p.m. for Wright, Kennedy King, and Malcolm X. And if you're not coming to the actual ceremony, you can watch it livestreamed on YouTube at www.ccc.edu/graduation. So that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chancellor Sagato. Any questions? I have one. So the Star Scholarship Fund, I remember when it started, it certainly has been a success, at least from all the information I've seen and heard, but how many years has it been?
Boy, we launched it in two thousand and sixteen, so, is it two thousand and sixteen? Can I have you correct me if I'm wrong, or two thousand and fifteen? Sorry.
Coming up on ten. So are we, seemingly, we ought to be planning some kind of report, you know, especially as it's coming up on ten years. I suspect. I suspect it's going to be a wonderful success story, and something that the public ought to know about, even institutions who are involved in Chicago. Okay, so now it's time for public participation, and we have two requests today. So when your name is called, please proceed to the podium, where you will have up to three minutes to make remarks on the subject that you indicated in your communication to the board office. The chief advisor will notify you when you've used three minutes of your time, and to kindly bring your remarks to a close. As you registered, you were each reminded of our procedure with respect to regards to nature of your comments, and I would ask that you respect and adhere to that direction as speakers always do, to satisfy entry-time requirements. So chief advisor, please proceed with the list of speakers.
Certainly. The first speaker is John Towns.
Good afternoon. My name is John Edmund Towns. I'm an adult educator, and I wanted to address the board today to speak to an issue of adult education. I personally believe in the intrinsic and intellectual and economic value of adult education programs at the City College of Chicago, as well as its value to the city of Chicago as a whole, and I'm sure you would all agree. The City Colleges of Chicago and adult education has had a most curious relationship. In the mid-1980s and 90s, the City Colleges of Chicago partnered with Northern Illinois University to provide training for teachers and administrators in the study and practice of adult education. During this time, CCC wanted to professionalize the field of adult education, and they recognized the uniqueness of this idea of lifelong learning. Now, this was a significant move. When I first interviewed for the position of adult education, adult educator, it was called training specialist at the time, I expressed concern at my interview about my lack of knowledge of adult education and the GED program, this is in the 1980s. I was unsure of what my skill level to teach adults, but I was assured by an upper-level administrator that if you ever taught Sunday School, you can teach GED. Now, that was many years ago, but as our adult educators approached the renegotiation of a new union contract, I'm not so sure that what I was told decades ago is not still the prevailing belief. As adult educators, we often feel disrespected as if we are unprofessional in providing a less than worthy service. I've been in the field of adult education for more than 30 years. I have a master's and a doctorate in the field of adult education. I've taught in and run adult education programs in the private sector as well. I grew to understand what it means when we say adult education is a field of study and practice. In my studies, I learned to teach adults, to study programs for adults, to develop programs for adults, and to write for and about adults. The reason I'm sharing this with you today is to express, like so many, I fell into adult education initially just by accident, but soon it became my chosen profession. It really started to intrigue me, the idea that adults have a specific way to learn, distinct from children. It was not my second job or just a decent-paying, part-time job, it was my primary focus, my primary job. To me, adult education is a very distinct and necessary professionalization, and it still is relatively underexplored, particularly in reference to certain marginalized communities. Adult education is a particular form of learning, a specific form of learning, it's not primary or secondary learning, you cannot plan and teach for adults the way we plan and teach for children. Adult learning is a distinct and specific practice known as ad agolge. By now, everyone knows this definition, at least intellectually, but when it comes to actual practice, we are couched in ignorance. I wanted to address the board today because of what I feel to be a lack of understanding of what adult education really is in practice. I have witnessed adult education programs at CCC being torn apart, only to be pieced together and reassembled several times.
Thank you, thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Can I give my time to Dr. Towns? I'd rather have it, please, please. Let's respect his 30 years of service to our colleges. I would like to give you my three minutes.
Thank you.
Very generous.
But when it comes to practice, we are couched in ignorance. I wanted to address the board today because of a lack of understanding of what adult education really is in practice. I have witnessed the adult education program at CCC being torn apart, only to be pieced together and reassembled several times, like a lay mechanic who decided to work on his own car, removing one part after another, only to discover afterward that he's not clear on what order to replace the parts again. However, we adult educators have invested our lives in helping our students reassemble there. I have watched the constant flux, the ebb and flow of adult education for more than 30 years here in City Colleges. Whenever a new administrator is hired, things that once worked are removed or replaced, and things that do not work remain. The only constant in this dynamic are the adult educators. We are committed. I once heard an adult education administrator say that they never stay on one job more than five years. Yet ladies and gentlemen, adult educators have teaching experience that goes 10, 20, 30 years and more, not for professional advancement necessarily, but for the socialization and the upliftment of our students. In a very few weeks, our educators will be sitting before CCC to renegotiate our contract. Some of you here may be among the representatives of the district, I pray that you remember what I have tried to humbly impart today. CCC adult educators are not opportunists, we are teachers, we're professionals, and when we speak of GED as a second chance, in reality, the adult educators, we are the second chance. Thank you so much. God bless you.
I want to respect your time, so I'm going to keep it very brief. First of all, I would like to thank my colleagues, especially Dr. Towns, who has been inspiration for all of us in adult education, writer of many books, been on the news a number of times, but somehow, you know, City College of Chicago has never recognized his contribution in the field of education. Anyways, ladies and gentlemen of the board, presidents, chancellor, dear colleagues, I appreciate the extra time, sir, I really do. My original training is in neuroscience, neurobiology, that's because I was not smart enough to do physics. So, you know, when I was younger, I became, you know, knowledgeable of your work, and when I was a younger man, you were a hero to me, and remain as a contributor to education in your later years. So thank you for your service to City Colleges and our students. That said, I have to pose a really quick question for you to ponder, which is, how many adult educators does it take to change a light bulb? To save your time, only one. She will do so, and it's at night, that's why she's replacing the light bulb, because the multiples of administrators who have been hired over the years are nowhere near the classroom, nowhere near to be found after 5 o'clock. They're all gone. The office is closed, nobody's there to support her and her students. She will do so while at the same time supporting students with special needs, that the City Colleges pay scant attention, because they are adult students. She will do so, supporting students of multiple levels, without co-teaching support as prescribed by ICCB. She will keep replacing that light bulb while her students need transition services, and she provides the transition services while people and monies have been allocated to provide these services, but nobody's there to provide the services. She will do so at Harold Washington after the classes are over, because of course, we don't offer adult education at Harold Washington, and adult students have to take adult education classes really for a price of credit classes. If she's a teacher at one of our African-American colleges, Olive Harvey, Kennedy King, if she wants to replace that bulb and teach an ESL class, she has to speak Spanish. That's a new credential that came out of nowhere. Dr. Towns spoke about the much-needed respect in the treatment of the adult educators and of the adult education students. For me, the future of education in our city, in the City Colleges, is adult education, productively integrating adult education with our credit, with our vocational classes, with our continuing education. This is missing. The other thing that I believe we need to work together is to follow the directions of the federal, the state, and the local governments, is we need to have programs that follow equity, effectiveness, transparency, and accountability. We want to work on that, please do your part. Thank you very much, I really appreciate your generosity, sir, and ladies.
Well, this is Chairman Walter Massey, I was just saying, welcome to give your first report to the trustees, and we're really looking forward to seeing you in person.
Yes, thank you so much. Okay, how are we on the echo, Juan?
It's fine, we can hear you very well.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Juan Ortega and Greg.
Oh, but I was so pleased to answer that, Professor Alexanderson, because from the moment I've gotten here, I have wanted to be referred to as Juan, so you made my day.
IT team, there's still a little bit of an echo, if you want to turn down that one channel? Okay. Thank you to the board for letting the adult education public speakers finish their remarks beyond three minutes. I appreciate the care in that decision. Additionally, thank you to the board and Olive Harvey College for supporting health equity and allowing me to present remotely, and thank you to the All-Star team that made these remote logistics possible, Greg Williams, Juan Ortega, Emma Min, Bonnie Phillips, and Steve Saba. Furthermore, thank you Chancellor Salgado for noting the interdependence and courageous conversations FC4 has had with admin. You may appreciate the themes that follow in this report, so here goes an approximately 10-minute-long report. Chairperson Massey, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Salgado, Provost Potter, Student Trustee Yahuda Goldblum, Officers of the District, Faculty, Staff, Students, Community Members and Beyond, greetings. To begin with, I want to share gratitude towards Truman College, one of the City Colleges of Chicago, for publishing a land acknowledgement statement on their website, which I will reference now. Quote, "We respectfully recognize the counsel of the three fires, the Ojibwe, Ottawa, and Potawatomi nations, and the Illinois Confederacy, the Peoria and Kaskasia nations, who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. Many other nations, including the Miami, Ho'kuk, Anemone, Bo'ak, and Sauk peoples, also call this region home. Indigenous people continue to live in this area and celebrate their traditional teachings and life ways. We acknowledge that we are on occupied land that was forcibly taken from its original owners, and we affirm that while we cannot change history, we can work for justice, and that justice begins with recognition and acknowledgement." End quote. Sources listed included the Newberry Library, the American Indian Center of Chicago. Thank you Truman College for being what we believe is the first of the seven City Colleges of Chicago to publish a land acknowledgement, and I hope that City Colleges of Chicago is open to pairing that with a district-wide action plan for supporting our indigenous students in a culturally responsive way, perhaps in part with the reparative effort of free tuition to those who are the traditional stewards of this land. Pivoting from the land acknowledgement and action plan request, now seems like a good time to introduce myself. My name is Vigi Alexanderson, I've been faculty at City Colleges of Chicago since 2014, where I've worked in a variety of departments, disciplines, and roles. In the mix of those roles, I am the newly-elected president of the Faculty Council of City Colleges of Chicago, abbreviated as FC4. This role, among others, has afforded me the opportunity to see what exactly makes City Colleges of Chicago Seven strong. Distilled from the collective voice of faculty and courageous shared governance conversations, I look forward to sharing some of those insights, among other pertinent FC4 matters, over the course of this academic year. First, however, I invite us all to center gratitude as we look back at what FC4 accomplished under former FC4 President Keith Spurer's leadership. From co-creating the Health and Safety Task Force Committee that established and triaged policies around COVID-19 precautions and exposure, to articulating how CCC can more sustainably uphold its commitment to racial equity, as well as other acts of FC4 service, Professor Spurer's presidential legacy will continue to impact us district-wide for years to come. Thank you for setting such a high bar for the work that we must continue to do, especially if we want to maintain our identity as Seven strong. Reflecting on the present day, what an election season it has been, congratulations to newly-elected FC4 representatives, and I would be remiss if I did not express extended gratitude for Dr. Enid Wells, who is the FC4 Vice President this academic year. Dr. Wells has consistently been a faculty champion of advocacy and FC4, and I feel so privileged to get to work with you in our new role. Broadening my lens a bit, as many of us know, as of May 15th, our new mayor for the city of Chicago will take office. Congrats on your win, Mayor-elect Brandon Johnson. In the hopes that you are watching this, I hope that you will continue to keep the lines of communication open with CCC. With former mayors of Chicago, our chancellor at CCC, Chancellor Juan Salgado, has fought the good fight of trying to make it onto the mayor's schedule, and in many of those instances has succeeded, not just to discuss pivotal issues, some of which were raised by FC4, but also, and perhaps more importantly, to discuss a plethora of solutions. We know that a mayor's schedule is not the easiest-to-be added to, but we do hope you will give the appropriate stakeholders at our institution a chance to show up at the mayoral table in pertinent citywide discussions. As such has been the case with Vice Chancellor Jen Mason's participation on the 2021 Established Working Group, A Roadmap for a Second Chance City, Chicago's Working Group on Returning Residents Recommendations, and with Vice Chancellor Stephanie Crowe on the Mayoral Gender-Based Violence Advisory Council, an inter-agency working group that put Chicago on the map as the first major U.S. city to create a comprehensive approach to gender-based violence awareness and prevention. In addition to that, Dr. Crowe serves as our access officer for the mayor's office for people with disabilities. We have immense gratitude for them and their respective teams for how they mobilize coordinated community efforts, amounting to 70-plus CCC personnel from a variety of departments to ensure we holistically engage in this work. In turn, that provided faculty direct and indirect opportunities of support in matters of curriculum, program development, of curriculum, program development, and professional development. CCC collaboration at the mayoral table also led to interalia CCC campuses serving as vaccination sites, providing CCC community members in the city of Chicago multiregional access to potentially lifesaving support. Arguably, this helped prevent classrooms and other spaces of coexistence from becoming super-spreader sites. We would like to extend gratitude to Vice Chancellor David Anthony for ensuring that we stayed in conversation with the mayor's office and the Chicago Public Health Department to honor CCC's commitment to public health. We all have a part to play in that. Furthermore, we hope that with what has been mentioned and many of the other initiatives CCC has consistently and effectively collaborated on with the mayor's office will keep us at the table. Doing so optimizes how we support our students, as well as the city of Chicago overall. Moreover, in a city as culturally and institutionally diverse as ours, interdependence is key in order to succeed. In the case of CCC, we are not separate entities from our surrounding communities. Instead, we are an integral part of them. Our students, faculty, and staff are not just residents, but active members of the community who can contribute to its development. Whether it's community service, civic engagement, research and data analysis, or any other collaboration points, our interdependence and courageous conversations are crucial to the success of our colleges in the city of Chicago. Now, as many of you know, today is May 4th, National Star Wars Day. May the fourth be with you. Some associate this day with what can be achieved through interdependence and courageous conversations. Some associate this day with what it looks like to stand up against powerful and oppressive forces to create a liberative and equitable world, even if it means risking their lives for the greater good. Those are powerful associations, and I wonder what positive impacts National Star Wars Day could have if we reflected on the brave and determined people who have actually done that in real life. In May of 1977, Star Wars: A New Hope hit the big screen, but 14 years earlier, in May of 1963, youth in Birmingham, Alabama, hit the streets, some of them as young as seven years old. From May 2nd to May 10th, thousands of youth gathered to fight for equality, education, and life, which involved brutal opposition from law enforcement and, in some cases, incarceration. They marched peacefully, singing and chanting expressions of stories and counterstories, expressions of courageous conversation. This shed a light on segregation and helped better inform the nation on the cultural and institutional atrocities taking place. In turn, this was foundational to the ratification of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Present day, we find ourselves at a national crossroads of whether or not to honor that all stories and counterstories are valuable to center in education, that all people are worth being seen, heard, respected, and affirmed in education. And while the word "all" is being used, it is worth noting the both end of this. All of our students should have access to an education that values their personhood, and not all students have the same lived experiences and positionalities and systems of privilege and oppression. We can have courageous conversations that express supporting all of our students while recognizing a one-size approach, a one-size curriculum, and a one-size perception of history do not fit all. At CCC, I know this is not news to us, and I hope that, given some of the very hurtful expressions happening on the national level of education, people realize that we at CCC are committed to providing safe, affirming, and equitable access to anyone looking to further themselves academically, professionally, and personally via higher education. So, how have we made good on that commitment? Instead of trying to eradicate intersectionality, critical race theory, Black feminism, queer theory, and other frameworks that address structural inequality, although making good on that commitment goes decades back, here is some of the more recent work being done. In the realm of curriculum, there are nearly a dozen Gender, Women's, and Sexuality Studies courses that enter the proposed academic curriculum changes process, exploring topics of care, culture, arts, representation, empowerment, social justice, social policy, STEM, health equity, and embodiment. In a different discipline, Africana Studies faculty created courses titled Black Chicago and Black Women in the African Diaspora. For all of those courses, we want to thank their respective developers and the Joint Curriculum Development Council, led by Associate Vice Chancellor Sarah Lichtenstein, for having courageous conversations and helping CCC sustain space for the pluralism that makes us beautifully diverse at CCC. In the co-curricular realm, honoring the aforementioned commitment has looked like Director Elvis Guzman spearheading efforts to support the adoption of the Campus Pride Index and where we go thereafter. It has looked like faculty, staff, and administrators being trained as undocue allies by Associate Dean Luvia Moreno to support undocumented students and their families in finding guidance and resources that would support their educational pursuit. While we do take pride in that work, we also are aware that there is some work to be done in order to ensure the sustainability of that commitment. For instance, how can we keep courses and/or programs in circulation if some of those courses or programs' core resources are attached to renewal contracts that should have a screen-blind process? Perhaps one of the quickest examples to share is that it should not take eight weeks for legal to decide whether or not we want to give a contract to a piano tuner who has tuned our pianos in previous semesters. Piano students need a piano that's in tune, or the class cannot exist and meet the standards needed for accreditation. Additionally, eight weeks is, in some cases, the duration of an entire course. It seems unfortunate that students could lose out on a course in a particular window of time, given the current red tape needed for contrast. Contracts should not create barriers to course and program delivery. We recognize the needs for contracts, but we think there's a better way to go about them. At this point, Faculty Council has shared requests of what that could look like with the administration to take to legal. We look forward to hearing legal's response. Adjacently, Faculty Council had the chance to hear from Deputy Chief Financial Officer Jeff Wong in our last two FC4 meetings. What we want to highlight from those conversations is that there is definitely a very detailed, oriented logic of care that goes into how CCC handles its fiduciary responsibilities. Where questions came up around the budget relationship to program and institutional sustainability, as well as how we might address structural inequalities, we were pleased to hear a logic that meets both federal and state nuances, while also centering that all seven city colleges are in this together. We would never want to leave one college behind the others, for instance, and how the logic of allocation was explained seems to honor that in a practical way. With that being said, I want to center the African philosophy of Ubuntu, famously translated into the phrase, "I am because we are." Our interconnectedness is one of the core facets that puts the community in community college because we recognize that our actions impact one another. Our interconnectedness thrives when we have courageous conversations. This is in part how we put forward our best selves and our best curricular and co-curricular efforts, both operationally and culturally. This is in part how we express that we value diversity, inclusivity, and celebration of differences. We take pride in City Colleges of Chicago in part because we are a community that is greater than the sum of its parts. We are Seven strong, and our success is intertwined, so let's continue to use the two forces of interconnectedness and courageous conversations toward communal success. If those two concepts are not at the heart of FC4, I don't know what is. With that particular context in mind, I will oblige the latest franchise of due due sense, may the force be with you. Last but not least, congratulations to the spring 2023 City Colleges of Chicago graduates. Similar to the interconnectedness logic of Ubuntu, CCC is because you are. We are immensely proud of you and look forward to your continued success. If there are no questions or comments, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Professor Alexanderson. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, we will move on. Looking forward to seeing you at the meeting in person next time. We will now have the district update. Provost Potter.
Thank you, Chair Massey, and good afternoon, trustees. First, before I begin with the district deputy, I do want to thank Professor Alexanderson for her remarks, the first of her remarks as president of FC4, the challenge that she has sort of put to city colleges to work with faculty for that inclusive educational approach that respects all students. And I look forward to working with the new leadership of Faculty Council for city colleges. So, previously, Chief of Staff and Chief Strategy Officer Veronica Herrero and I presented on city colleges' performance on a number of key performance indicators. You may recall, a few months ago, we presented at a board meeting, and we had a visual with green, yellow, and red indicating how we performed against targets. So, in addition to that work of measuring performance against targets up to now, we've also been spending, over the past several months, time going through an iterative process to set targets for fiscal years 2024 through 2026. The district-level targets that you see on the screen, if you could go to the next slide, I have the clicker, never mind. The district-level targets that you see on the screen that I will talk you through are rolled up from college targets set by local leadership, working with the district office, data team, and the chancellor, Chief of Staff Herrero, and myself. So, in the process, while we were setting these targets, we heard feedback that there were too many KPIs. For example, we had multiple enrollment KPIs, multiple retention KPIs, and that the ability to distinguish among them was not easy. The multitude of KPIs was causing some confusion. And so, in response, we have significantly pared down the KPIs that we are now considering our front-facing scorecard KPIs, the ones that we'll be reporting on to you and communicating publicly. And in the process of identifying these scorecard KPIs, we've taken care to ensure that they capture the core performance of city colleges. And those are the KPIs in front of you on this first slide that I will walk you through. Our primary metric for enrollment is what we report to ICCB, and that's at the top row on the screen. This is unduplicated headcount of students across a fiscal year who enroll in either credit programs or adult education programs, or in some cases, both, but if a student is enrolled in both, they are counted once. That's what we mean when we say "unduplicated." And because this is an ICCB-reported number, we're able to benchmark our performance against other community colleges in the state. And again, here's an example where this single measure encompassing credit and adult education enrollment captures the core business of city colleges. So, the targets for this enrollment KPI anticipate continued enrollment growth year over year, and I am looking, for the purposes of this presentation, primarily at the floor targets that are indicated for each year. Initially, that growth projects 7% growth between our fiscal year '23 actual and next year's target, and then 4% of growth in the next two years. We're confident in our ability to build off the current enrollment momentum, especially as we deploy strategies to improve retention. We also want to be able to show what enrollment looks like when continuing education students, these are students enrolled in non-credit programs, are added to the numbers. We can think of this as total enrollment of all students enrolled in any program, taking any classes at city colleges, and these numbers on the second row show a similar rate of growth as the ICCB enrollment targets. We've limited our scorecard retention KPIs to two. Those are fall-to-spring retention and fall-to-fall retention. The former one, fall-to-spring, is a measure that we have long been looking at at city colleges, and the latter, the fall-to-fall, is still relatively new to city colleges. We believe that it's important to capture that fall-to-fall retention to understand how students are faring across an entire year of study. And you can see that we're committed to managing to improvement in both of these measures, targeting growth in fall-to-spring retention from 73% currently to 77% by fiscal year '26, and fall-to-fall retention from 45% currently to 51% in the same timeframe. The two taking and passing KPIs, one for English and one for math, are our important momentum KPIs. Our goal with these is to maximize the number of students who take and pass these college-level classes in their first year, because we know that students who meet that milestone progress better toward achieving their completion and post-completion goals. And everything that we're doing in the areas of placement, advising, student academic supports, and innovative course delivery is designed to increase these rates. For these measures, we don't have fiscal year '23 actuals yet, and these targets are still provisional. In fact, I should just take a moment to say that until the chancellor gives final approval, all of these targets are provisional, but some are more provisional than others, and this would be the ones that are more provisional than others, because we don't yet have the fiscal year '23 actuals until we close out spring semester classes, and technically summer classes as well. But after we close out spring semester classes and process course outcomes and grades, we'll have a very good sense of how fiscal year '23 actuals are shaping up, and we will proceed with the same exercise of the colleges confirming their targets and rolling those up to the district. They should look somewhere in the same ballpark as what you're seeing on the table, but we do need to go through that exercise. What you'll see, though, is that we are continuing to manage across all of the areas that I mentioned, the placement, the advising, the innovative course delivery, in order to improve these momentum outcomes. Our four-year outcomes measure is our primary completion KPI. It's the one that is all-encompassing, capturing all students who begin a credit program at city colleges, whether they're new to college or transfer students, whether they're full-time or part-time, and regardless of when in the academic year they start. This KPI then captures all of those students who either complete a credential or transfer to a baccalaureate-granting institution within four years. And we seek to significantly improve this completion measure by nine points by fiscal year '26. And I'll remind the board that we actually have a goal for a universal completion of 55% by 2032. And so, this fiscal year '26 goal and what we need to do between now and then gets us on our way to that 2032 goal of a universal completion rate of 55%. And finally, I just want to note that our KPI for transfer is under review because we recognize that it doesn't capture the full transfer story for our students. The denominator is limited to completers, and the two-year transfer rate of our completers actually hasn't changed much from around 50% in the last several years. And so, we're looking at creating a more encompassing transfer KPI, similar to how we created a more encompassing completion KPI. Okay, so, on this slide, what you see are all of the KPIs that didn't make it onto that front-facing list of scorecard KPIs. And you can begin to appreciate, I think, how, had we just presented all of these together, it would have been a lot, probably too much, too detailed, and too many different metrics that are too difficult to distinguish from one another. So, I won't go through each of these. We consider these our now operational KPIs. They are operationally still important to us, and we are going to go through the process still of setting targets, holding ourselves accountable to them, and ensuring that we are operating to growth. Because, in fact, hitting the targets with these KPIs are going to help us then hit the targets on the front-facing scorecard KPIs. And so, with that, I think I will conclude and ask for any questions. And so, with that, I think I will conclude and ask for any questions.
Well, first of all, I just whispered to the chancellor, "Thank you for simplifying these enrollment KPIs because they have..." Anyway. So, where does a course that I saw here today, the students who are learning to drive these trucks, it says a 16-week course, right? Is that continuing education or where is that?
Would you like to answer that? So, the course that they saw today, the truck-driving course?
The CDL course is a credit-bearing course. It goes for 16 weeks.
And that's...
So, they would be counted in our credit enrollment, that ICCB enrollment measure, the first one on that list. They are enrolled in credit programs, receiving college credit. And they would be counted in our retention metric as well. Although technically, if it's a 16-week course, they're not cutting across two tiers.
Right, and they are not intending to stay two years.
That's correct. So, we do...
And your retention, how do you count that?
When students are enrolled in a short-term program and they complete, they're removed from the denominator, so they're not counting against the retention numbers.
That's a good question.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
So, now, thank you very much. That's a very interesting report. Thank you. Need those periodic... So, Trustee Williams, well, will you do it? Trustee Swanson, who will do that? Trustee Williams, will you please proceed with the report of committee today?
Thank you, Chair Massey. Thank you, Chair Massey, and good afternoon to all. The Finance and Administrative Services Committee was presented with an update from Ms... How's this? Thank you. The Finance and Administrative Services Committee was presented with an update from Ms. Gina Gentile, the City Colleges of Chicago's Director of Internal Audit. The report included follow-up of audit findings from fiscal year 2022 and the audit plan for fiscal year 2024. The Internal Audit Department is an independent CCC organization charged with assessing and measuring organizational risk through periodic enterprise risk assessments with the goal of establishing a risk-based internal audit plan and evaluating the effectiveness of internal controls and business processes. This work is pursued to drive a level of transparency and efficiency in financial operations that helps the leadership of CCC and its colleges achieve operational, financial, and strategic objectives, as well as to assess compliance with applicable laws, regulations, ordinances, contracts, grants, and City Colleges of Chicago policies and procedures. The internal auditor's work is performed in accordance with the Institute of Internal Auditor Standards. The internal auditor provided findings from work performed at Harold Washington Wilbur Wright in certain specific departments. And ratings associated with audit findings are categorized satisfactory or needs improvement or unsatisfactory. These ratings are designed to point the way toward internal improvements, an effort where the specific college or department works in partnership with internal audit. Additionally, we reviewed the Resolutions, Personnel Items, Resource Development Report, Agreements, Purchases, and Legal Invoices included on today's Finance and Administrative Services Committee agenda as part of the Consent Agenda to this May 4, 2023 regular board meeting. Chair Massey, barring any questions, this concludes the Finance and Administrative Services Committee report.
So, thank you very much, Trustee Williams. We will now consider the items on the May 4, 2023 regular board meeting consent agenda. All items excluding Agreement 4.08 for May 4, 2023 Board Action this month are on the consent agenda, which is printed on a copy outside of this room. These items were discussed in detail, as you have heard, in the committee meeting immediately preceding this board meeting. At this time, does any trustee have any questions or comments on items listed on the consent agenda or wish for separate action on any of these items? No? Well, may I have a motion to approve the Personnel Report, the Resource Development Report, Resolution, and the various agreements, purchases, and legal invoices contained in the consent agenda and identified as part of the printed agenda on a single roll called Vote? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Chief Advisor, please call the roll.
Chair Massey?
Approved.
Vice Chair Swanson?
Approved.
Secretary Davis?
Approved.
Trustee Kent?
Approved.
Trustee Williams?
Approved.
Trustee Goldblum?
Approved.
Approved. Let the records show that the Personnel Report, the Resource Development Report, Resolution, Agreement, Purchases, and Legal Invoices included on the printed May 4, 2023 consent agenda have all been approved. So, now, in accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act, the board may hold a closed session for the discussion of matters related to a number of specified topics. Today's closed session will be for the discussion of matters related to appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body. 2C2, collective negotiating matters between the public bodies and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Or 2C11, litigation when an action against, affecting, or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before court or administrative tribunal. Or when the public body find that an action is probable or imminent, in which case, the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed session. May I have a motion to go into a closed session with a roll called Vote?
So moved.
That's second.
Second.
Will the Chief Advisor please call the roll?
Chair Massey?
Approved.
Vice Chair Swanson?
Approved.
Secretary Davis?
Approved.
Trustee Kent?
Approved.
Trustee Williams?
Approved.
Trustee Goldblum?
Approved.
Let the records show that the closed session motion has been approved. We shall withdraw.
Turn off all lights.
How does it light up?
So this is Professor Alexander. You tell him to watch the video, okay? When it cuts back into session, you know, it's really like, did you guys get these or what? But no, seriously, but it's not on yet. Here we are. Here we are. Okay. I have to say the force of the heat.
That's it. The B.C. could be looking. All right.
The B.C.
All right, we're in session here. So the May 4, 2023 regular board meeting is now reconvened. There was no action taken during this closed session, which required action in the open session. Now there being no further business to come before the board, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays may leave the road. Meeting of the doves.
Thank you.